Everyone, I am going to call our meeting to order and ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Get my notes in order here. Meeting documents are over by Commissioner Heiburger. If you have a cellphone, you may want to silence it, and if you need any listening devices, Craig Dewey can help you with that. Alrighty, we are going to look for a motion to amend our agenda.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to remove item seventeen?
Second.
Motion in a second to amend the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Now looking for a motion to approve our amended agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Looking for a motion to approve our meeting minutes for April twenty-seventh, 2021.
Motion to approve the minutes? Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And that was for the regular commission meeting. Now we also have, we need a motion for the joint meeting of Sioux Falls City Council and Minnehaw County meeting.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries again. Bills to be paid: $2,212,220.07.
Move for approval. Benega?
Second.
Comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have reports from Minnehaw County Emergency Management Service, first quarter report, and County Office of the Public Advocate, annual report, sitting again on the end. Move on to person, routine personnel, personnel actions, easy for me to say. Look for a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
In favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carries. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have a few items for you. The first is to recognize the following significant employee anniversaries for May. We have Elizabeth Bartman in the Treasurer's Office celebrating five years of service, Scott Dubey in the Sheriff's Office celebrating fifteen, and Peggy Henley in the State's Attorney's Office, also celebrating fifteen. I don't think we have anyone with us today, but grateful for their thirty-five years of service. The next item I have is to record the volunteers in the county, one hundred and thirty-seven people helping us in eight separate departments in the county, and as usual, that's a lot of, a lot of hours, and we can't do it without them.
And we're grateful to, again, longevity and the volunteers. Thank you to everyone, so, alrighty.
The last thing I have for you is to approve the hire of Steve Groan as the Highway Superintendent at $4,026.5 and sixty cents bi-weekly, with a paid time off accrual at 6.46 hours bi-weekly effective on or after June fourteenth. This is listed since it is outside the hiring range. The PT off accrual is consistent with the county policy, and it's my pleasure to let you know that Steve Groan is here today as well.
Good morning, Steve. Would you like to make a few comments?
Good morning, Commissioners. I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity, and I'm real excited to get down here and start working next month. Hopefully, we can find a house soon and get moved, but I appreciate the opportunity. I'm excited to start, and thanks again.
Thank you.
Critical position in our, in our leadership team, Steve. Welcome, and we've had some very stiff competition. We're grateful to everybody that, that took the time, and it was a long week for many of us, and it was a, a good but a hard decision to make, so welcome.
Yeah, but I've had a good chance to already talk a few times with the staff, and they're all outstanding people, so I'm looking forward to working with all of them and you two.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Welcome again. Alrighty, we have a list of abatements, twenty-seven of them to be exact. We're going to take them in kind of groups because they cover multiple years for same individuals or they're the same type of thing, so we'll begin with parcel two-one-seven-six-six and Veterans Exemptions for 2019 and 2020.
Yeah, Chris Lilly equalization. All of these recommended abatements are, all happen to be veterans, and I'll just preclude this a little bit. The reason the list is so long now is because we were waiting to get these veterans actually on our 2021 assessments as validated as receiving that. We're not going to do that in the future. Once we know they're, they meet the qualifications, we're going to move these abatements through as, as we come in, since we're dealing with past years, so we shouldn't have these big lists any longer. Little lesson learned and growing pains. So yeah, parcel, or sub parcel A, two-one-seventy-six for 2019, property taxing amount of $148.84. 2020 property taxing amount of $2,095.72. And if I didn't mention, all of this list, we are recommending for approval, so we can cut the chase on that.
Motion to approve?
Second.
The first two items.
Motion in a second. Call the roll.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Bennigan?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye. Motion carries.
Sub parcel B is parcel eight-eight-seven-nine-seven, Veterans Exemption for 2018, property taxing amount of $1,078.65, 2019 property taxing amount of $1,598.97, and the 2020 property taxes in the amount of $2,354.36.
For approval of parcel eight-eight-seven-nine-seven?
Second by Barth. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye. Motion carries. Carrie, carry on.
Item C, parcel number nine-one-eight-six-one, Veterans Exemption for 2020 property taxing amount of $2,301.37.
Motion to approve item C?
Second.
Call the roll.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye.
Item D is parcel number eight-eight-nine-zero-three, Veterans Exemption, 2020 property taxing amount of $943.84.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call. No, no problem. You get.
Barr?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye. Motion carries.
Item E is parcel number six-seven-four-one-four, Veterans Exemption, 2019 property taxing amount of $1,184.63, 2020 property taxes in the amount of $2,311.78.
Motion to approve those two.
Second.
Barth and Heiburger, call the roll.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye. Carries.
Item F, parcel number two-two-zero-seven-three, Veterans Exemption, 2020 property taxing amount of $182.88.
Motion to approve abatement two-two-zero-seven-three, parcel two-two-zero-seven-three.
Motion by Barth, second by Bennigan. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye. Carries.
Item G, parcel number one-seven-nine-one-two, Veterans Exemption, 2019 property taxing amount of $101.09, and the 2020 property taxing amount of $1,760.39.
Motion to abate property taxes on parcel one-seven-nine-one-two.
Second, Bennigan. Call the roll.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye.
Item H is parcel number six-zero-nine-five-six, Veterans Exemption, 2020 property taxing amount of $2,060.38.
Move for approval of parcel six-zero-nine-five-six. Bennigan?
Second. Call the roll.
Barr?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye. Carries.
Item I is parcel six-six-five-three-eight, Veterans Exemption, 2020 property taxing amount of $1,938.7.
Motion to approve exemption on six-six-five-three-eight.
Second.
Call the roll.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Carson?
Ready? Item J, parcel two-three-four-zero-four, Veterans Exemption, 2020 property taxing amount of $2,678.90.
Move for approval of abatement two-three-four-zero-four.
Motion by Bennigan, second by Bender. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Barr?
Oh, yes.
This is going to get long.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
We're not done yet.
Item K, parcel five-two-four-one-one, Veterans Exemption, 2020 property taxing amount of $2,251.62.
Motion to approve item K?
Second.
Motion by Heiburger, second by Bender. Call the roll.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye. Carries.
Item L, parcel five-one-nine-nine-four, Veterans Exemption, 2020 property taxing amount of $2,251.62.
Motion to approve L?
Second, Bennigan. Call the roll.
Barr?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye. Carries.
Item M, parcel seven-nine-zero-eight-seven, Veterans Exemption, 2020 property taxing amount of $1,887.66.
Motion to approve M?
Second.
Call the roll.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye.
Item N, parcel one-nine-nine-five-three, Veterans Exemption, 2019 property tax, the amount of $1,211.11, as well as the 2020 property taxes in the amount of $2,135.80.
Motion to approve N one and N two?
Second.
Motion by Barth, second by Heiburger. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye. Carries.
Item O, parcel eight-zero-six-five-zero, Veterans Exemption, 2020 property taxing amount of $567.55.
Motion to approve O.
Second, Bennigan. Call the roll.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Carson?
Item P, parcel five-nine-five-six-nine, Veterans Exemption for the 2019 property tax, the amount of $129.84, as well as the 2020 property taxes, the amount of $2,251.62.
Motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Bender and Heiburger, call the roll.
Barr?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye. Carries.
Item Q, parcel three-six-zero-eight-six, Veterans Exemption for 2019 property tax, the amount of $129.83, as well as the 2020 property taxes, the amount of $2,230, $32.
Motion to approve Q?
Second.
Second.
Bender?
Heiburger and Bender, call the roll.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye. Carries.
Item R, parcel five-seven-three-one-zero, Veterans Exemption, 2020 property tax, the amount of $567.52.
Motion to approve parcel five-seven-three-one-o. Bennigan?
Second. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye. Carries, and then the last one.
Item S, parcel six-six-four-two-six, Veterans Exemption, 2020 property tax, the amount of $616.39.
Motion to approve.
Second. Barth and Bennigan, call the roll.
Barr?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye. Carries. Alrighty. Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Chris a question here?
Please.
Chris, how does a person who thinks they might be entitled to the Veterans Exemption apply for it? And work with the Veteran Service Officer, the VA, most directly. They have to have a hundred percent permanent total rating, that's service-connected disability from the VA. Unfortunately, we have to screen these pretty in-depth. If it's not permanent in total in nature, there's a lot of veterans out there that are paid at a hundred percent, but if their disability is not considered permanent in total, they're, they're two different meanings. They get compensation at their rate of pay at the hundred percent as a veteran, but I've had instances where there has been a veteran that's been rated a hundred percent disabled, but not permanent in total, because then they'd have a surgery or something, and then their, their rating, since it's not established permanent in total, maybe some of that is corrected, and they're, they're paid at a hundred, rated at a hundred, but not permanent, not total, then they have a surgery, you know, maybe they had cancer or something, and that was treated, and all of a sudden, there's no signs of cancer, and their rating is reduced to eighty. So it has to be that permanent and total service-connected disability to qualify, and the VA works with those individuals, sends out notifications, it's, it's a constant. Ratings are, that's why these abatements come in, and why they, why we have so many of these, because as a veteran, you know, maybe he's been in, and he's been at eighty percent, eighty percent, then he moves to a hundred, but he's not considered permanent in total. He's at a hundred, he's at a hundred, and then all of a sudden, the VA says, okay, now you are a hundred percent permanent total, and we're going to make your date effective back here. It's the way the government works. They, they go back and pay in the rear. Well, once that date is effective, permanent in total back here, now it's abatements. So Chris, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, what about spousal survivorship? Is that still affected? Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Yep, so if, if a spouse is married to a veteran who passes away that was permanent in total at that time, we continue to move that forward, or in the instance, if, if a veteran just got it, maybe, maybe he passed away today, and his rating came in, and it was effective two years ago, we will go in and do the abatement for him two years back to get that, and then we will carry that forward on the surviving spouse, as long as she stays unremarried in that property. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Moving on to notice and requests, there's one from the city of Crooks, establishing rural service and urban service districts. Again, just a notice, we have a no planning and zoning notices, and we do have a couple petitions for compromise lien. First one is DPNO seven-three-eight-seven-six, in the amount of $1,000. Good morning, Mel.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melinda Storey, Commission Office. The action requested today is to release the petitioner from the joint lien with payment of $500, leaving the remainder of the lien balance of $500 in the name of the petitioner's ex-spouse. Lien DPNO seven-three-eight-six-seven, in the amount of $1,000, names both the petitioner and her ex-husband. It represents poor relief assistance recorded in 2010 during the period they were married. The couple married July twenty-eighth, 2007, and divorced October second, 2013. The petitioner is in the process of purchasing a home for $255,000, and is expected to close on May thirty-first, 2021. She's requesting to be relieved from the burden of the lien with payment of fifty percent of the balance in order to move forward and close on the home for her and her three children. Her 2020 taxes show an income of $49,441, with a refund of $6,974. Today, she lists an income of $6,715. Her two most recent paychecks show bi-weekly wages of $2,316.79. Assets listed total $50,527.38, and liabilities total $37,000.
Thank you, Mel. Is the petitioner here?
No.
No? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to accept the payment of 500 on behalf of the one spouse and leave the full remaining 500 against the other party.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. I believe you need a roll call vote on this. Is that right, Rhonda?
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Carson?
Aye. Carries. All right. One more.
Could I just make a comment? On her application, it asked us for the $500 abatement, if you will, but it says also that she would like her ex-husband to be ordered to pay the other 500. We can't do that, so I think she needs to be noted, or indicated to her that that's not part of our motion.
Will do. I did mention that to her when she applied, that that would be, have to come from the courts.
Alrighty, DPNO five-eight-eight-four-one.
On this lien, the petitioner is requesting a release from the joint lien with payment of $440, leaving the remainder of the lien balance of $27,104.88 in the name of the petitioner's ex-spouse. Lien DPNO five-eight-eight-four-one, in the amount of $27,505.28, names both the petitioner and her ex-husband. All but one of the legal fees are for representation for the petitioner's ex-spouse. The couple married February twenty-twenty-eight, 2008, and divorced May twenty-third, 2019, for reasons explained in the narrative and in an excerpt from the divorce decree the petitioner wanted to share with you. The petitioner is in the progress, process of purchasing the home she and her four children are living in for $183,000, and is expected to close on May thirty-first, 2021. She is requesting to be relieved from the burden of the lien for fees incurred while they were married by offering payment of $250, which is fifty percent of the poor relief in 2014, and payment of the $154.40 for her legal representation from the public advocates' office in 2019. Her 2020 taxes show an income of $26,015, with a refund of $7,413. Today, she lists an income of $33,484, from weekly wages of $300 from a part-time job, and the rest is business income from her food truck sales. Assets listed total $22,318.35, and liabilities total $2,000.
Thank you very much, and we have a lot of documents in front of us. I trust everybody's had a chance to review them. We can take comments from the petitioner, who I believe is here, or we can go to questions from the Commissioners. Which would you prefer? Why don't we go to questions first, or comments from the Commissioners?
I'm in sympathy for the situation.
Would anybody like to hear from the petitioner?
I'm going to suggest that we release the petitioner of the entire $400.40 after reading the application. I won't go into her details by any stretch, but this is extremely ridiculous.
Amen.
I would second that motion.
Okay, so your motion is to release without any payment?
Right, and the remaining balance that the ex-spouse is responsible for would be charged to that individual.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I agree. I just wanted to make a comment. Just reading this narrative and stuff, I would like to commend the, the young woman for the work that she's done to try to put her life back together, and she's not upside down. She's managed to save some money and have some assets actually in her name, and not have a, not come to us with a tremendous amount of liability. Doesn't mean life isn't hard, but you've worked very hard with the four kids you have, and I commend you for your hard work.
Alrighty, roll call vote, please.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we are at the point for public comment. If anybody would like to make public comment. Anybody rush for the mic? We'll move on to our regular business section. We have a public hearing to consider a declaration of public nuisance for property at 8101 West 12th Street. Take it away, Kevin.
Good morning. Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. Before you hear, I have a request to declare a public nuisance on the property at 8101 West 12th Street. It's legally described, as written in the PowerPoint here, the west fourteen acres. Accept H1, and accept Rocky Ridge addition, and accept the part in city limits of the northeast quarter, northwest quarter of Section 22, 10150. northeast quarter, northwest quarter of Section 22, 10150. Staff received a complaint about this a little while ago, or actually last fall, and the first letter went out to the wrong address, but then the second letter went out later. And the petitioner or the landowner has received that letter. I'll bring up the map here where it's located prior to the deadline. When I spoke to the landowner, I discussed what the items that were of concern to the planning department, and he said he described his situation. He does not believe he's a public nuisance and requested to be brought to this hearing. I'll go through some of the photos. So this is a photo from last December, kind of dark, maybe the next one will show a little bit better. You can see kind of in the front of the photos, there's a large pile of broken up concrete. There in the behind that, there's some weeds and in the weeds is a bunch of like wood and other kind of building material type things, pallets. Further back, you can see a couple of tree removal company trucks and a semi-trailer. And although I could not tell if those are licensed or not, that's not necessarily part of the public nuisance, but it is a zoning violation, which would be separate from the action taken here because a zoning violation would have to go through the state's attorney and the process, a different process. So part of the original complaint was like campers and stuff being stored on the property. The property owner does own storage units just to the south or behind the house, in which I think most of the vehicles and things have been moved back there as requested. And you can see the sign for that camper storage. And here you can see a pretty good view of the large pile of concrete there. And zoomed in, you can start to see some of the wood and the other kind of materials that that is requested to be removed from the property. And there are a couple of vehicles in the back there, and you can get a little bit better view of some of the commercial vehicles on the site as well. I'll bring it back to the map. So staff has determined that this property, it would be meet our definition of public nuisance. The two spots specifically in the ordinance that the is on the property is abandoned property and improper accumulation of waste material, which includes concrete. South Dakota Codified Law 2110-6 allows the county to declare a public nuisance and allows the county to clean up the property and defray the cost of the property owner. And therefore, the planning and zoning department requests Minnea County Commission to declare the property legally described before as a public nuisance in an Act 2110-6. And I am here for any questions, and I believe the property owner is here too. He has been notified of this request.
Madam Chair, or Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I'm so used to these women running everything. Kevin, I assume that this was a complaint from somebody that we responded to?
Yes, this was a complaint.
And how long ago did that complaint come in?
So the complaint would have come back in, I believe it was September of last year. And like I said, the first kind of an iteration of sending out notices went to the wrong address, and we corrected that error.
So some of the vehicles have been put into the storage at this point? Or are they still all open storage?
So this map doesn't show it very well because it shows the city limits. This is right next to the city of Sioux Falls. So on the bottom part of the map, there's a gray area, and that's where the storage units are that the the property owner has mini storage. And some of like the campers and other vehicles like that have been moved there, but the commercial vehicles are still out kind of by the barn.
If I could, what's this, the red square there? That's zoned?
The property is zoned A1 agriculture.
So it's zoned ag, okay. Okay. Other questions for Kevin? Commissioner Hiberger.
I'm assuming this concrete has been here a long time. Is this part of what his business is? And would it be helpful if it had a screen so that it was screened from 12th Street? I drive by here regularly.
I think it's the homes behind it that are concerned about it, not necessarily 12th Street.
I think that, and the landowner might be able to tell you a little bit more, but I believe the concrete came from crushing a concrete surface where his storage units are located, and he moved them up front and piled it there. So I think he moved from the back to the front after he did work for the storage units.
Would the property owner like to make comments?
Good morning.
Please give your name, address.
My name is Dan Asop. My residential address is 7804 West Browning Street. So our house, it doesn't show on that map right there, but we live in the row of houses pretty much connected to the property right next to the storage units. And so all the other houses to the left or the right, or I guess where that whited-out area is, I have good relations with all of those neighbors, and I even have a a letter from one of them saying that I've been doing a great job cleaning up the property over the years, and he thinks that I'll continue to keep it nice. Questions?
I guess if you could, Dan, maybe address each one of the things. One, we have a concrete pile that I think is part of the cleanup, and the other is some wood. The rest is a zoning issue that we're not here to talk about today.
Okay.
Because that's a civil matter that
Okay.
Isn't related to this, so we're just talking about the cleanup unless I miss something.
Sure. And I talked with Kevin about the the list of fences. Something just came to me as you it was you were talking about the wood when we talked on the phone. Were you talking about the logs? Or I think you're now talking about pallets and like boards and some, I now realize that there's sections of fence laying out there. Is that more the complaint, or is the logs the complaint?
All of it.
Oh, okay. Okay, so the, I'm excited that you got pictures of the the big red barn with the American flag on the roof because I'm very proud of that. It's in two national Dodge Ram commercials and a National Barn calendar, so it's it's kind of cool. But just north of that barn, there's some logs, and I have them stored there because in my understanding, A1 agriculture, the logging industry forever has been a part of agriculture. And my plan is to mow those logs. I can see Kevin's point that just north of the barn, there is some fence panel sections, and I could move those if that's a nuisance to somebody's eyes. The concrete that is piled there, am I able to go back on pictures? Yeah, there we go. There you can see there underneath of that maple tree is where the concrete pile is. And that was taken down from a building, as Kevin said, so that I could build the storage units. And it's not waste to me. I strategically put it there for my animal runoff. All of the, there's a large slab of concrete there where the arrows pointing are just north of the barn, and so all the animal runoff would come right down into the ditch, into the right-of-way, down to Skunk Creek. So I strategically put that concrete there to hold the runoff back. I've got an agricultural background, and so I take pride in erosion, nuisance, things like that, just property management. So to me, it's not waste materials. I put it there for a reason. And my goats, you know, like climbing on it as well and eating the leaves off of the the tree. And just want another comment about that is, the the highway is eight feet higher than the bottom of of the land there. So you really do have to look down to see the concrete, you know, if you're even driving by in a vehicle. So it's not like that's this big massive concrete pile that are offending peoples. You you really have to look for it, especially in the summertime when that tree leafs out. The the there that that bus, so I talked with Kevin as well, and this is something that that I will concede to, and I have moved these vehicles away from there. The the tenants just couldn't get to the proper parking space in in the fall because it was too muddy, so they just parked there temporarily. But now we have moved them, and there's nothing sitting there now along the highway. The bus and the camper are are gone. The sign, Kevin and I talked about that as well, and he said that is permissible. And he said if I fill out a form and pay a hundred bucks, I can continue to have my sign that's been there for eight years.
So we got a rock pile, and we got some logs, or cement pile and some rock.
Right. And you you make a point there. I mean, I feel that, what's the difference between cement and, you know, rocks? Every farmer in the world has a rock pile on his property. I put that cement there to for animal waste runoff control. Yep, the the pile of wood, you know, I can move. But I also spend a lot of time being a good neighbor. I mow the ditch along there just because it makes it look nicer. I I mowed the three adjoining neighbors' ditches as well. I don't ask them to do it, I just do it because it looks better. And as a property owner and a business owner, you know, there, I want it to look nice all the way along there. And even back into the residential neighborhood, which is a city property, the city only mows five feet along the sidewalk, but there's this big slough area where a creek runs through, and it's just a Canadian thistle infestation. And I don't ask anybody about that either, but I mow it with my little Farmall tractor in Sicklemore just because it looks better. The neighbors appreciate it, and it's just being a good steward. So I I don't think that it's a nuisance, and I'm quite surprised that there's not a complainant person here saying what exactly is bothering them.
I guess I, since this is a quasi judicial action, I think is the proper term for it, I have to disclose that I do drive by this property every day, several times sometimes. And I've known Dan for a number of years, and actually I had did meet with him probably a month ago or so, and we visited about this. So just in full disclosure that you know that I might be a little closer to this than the rest of you, just so you're aware.
Mr. Chairman, I have two questions. One is, what does your sign say? I couldn't read it.
Something about storage units.
Okay.
It says, welcome to the neighborhood, storage something, phone number.
Can you see where someone might complain about your property there? Can you see where that might be an issue for somebody? And and I, are you considering steps to maybe make it less of a potential problem for whoever that is, plant some trees or something? I'm just asking if you have any thoughts.
So I think we're down to the the wood and the concrete. Yes, I can I can see that somebody doesn't like it, but ironically, I don't think it's any of the 300 people that they that live in the neighborhood because they all don't drive by there. You know, Dean and other people who drive, you know, Cindy, who drive by there would see it, but none of the people who got the notice, they all take Discovery and go into town. So people out at Cherry Lake, you know, would see it. But yeah, I can see that, you know, somebody, you know, might not like this or that. But I also think that if you remember the property over 10 years ago, it was way worse than it is now. And as the letter of my neighbor says, I've been continually cleaning it up and making it better. I can't remember the young man's name, but he's soil erosion, make sure that you have those things in place. So when I was developing the property, he commended me on all of my soil erosion measures, and he even complimented me saying that I should go into the private sector and like educate some other business owners because they do a terrible job. So I I feel that I've I've done as good a job as I can. And like I said, I mow the ditches of the three neighbors, and so I do do things, you know, to make it pretty. I was out at the family lake, which is just north of there, and it's really cool that you can see that barn with the flag on it from a long, long ways away. And so I think that's a huge improvement, you know, so I think I should get credit, you know, for that as well. That, like I said, it's in national commercials, and it's a really pretty thing. But, you know, the person complaining or people complaining, you know, aren't bringing that up as well. I think I've added a lot of value to the property. But yes, I can see that if they don't like a weed or a board or some concrete there, I don't know what I can do to appease that. I mean, I can clean up some of the lumber around there.
Commissioner Hiberger.
This is a public hearing, so I'm just wondering if they're gonna go to that direction, otherwise I'll make some comments, but I'm just wondering.
Yep, I was gonna ask if anybody else is here too that would like to put comment on this hearing. Okay, Commissioner Hiberger.
Continue my comments. I think that from my recollection, this property has cleaned up significantly. And when I look at this aerial picture, and I don't know how old this is, Kevin, but he's got all of his logs laid in a line. He doesn't have, I mean, we've looked at plenty of properties that are a mess, and I don't consider this a mess. Maybe he could put make straighter lines, or maybe there are some things there that that could be put more together. The rocks, I'm glad to hear a description or a reason why you did it because I did I have driven by and go, I wonder why there's all that concrete there. If it hadn't been concrete and it had been a pile of field rocks or a pile of of red rock from across the road, nobody'd probably say anything. And so just the fact that it's concrete, somebody maybe feels like it's just been dumped there, but there is a purpose there. And so I don't, you know, I'm anxious to hear what anybody else has to say, but at this point, I don't think I'll support a nuisance. I think he's continuing to make improvements on the property, and it has come a ways from where it was. But I'm open to listening to other people's comments.
I just have a question for Kevin. If this is ag property, do we have any violations with rock and trees and other ag-related issues? Because it seems like he's moved the vehicles according to what he just said, and he's cleaned up some of the other stuff that I can't identify, but but it looks, I'm not sure what it was. But as far as trees and rocks, isn't that part of a natural ag operation?
That's a good question. So agriculture in Minnea County is is a little bit different in that basically it's the blanket zoning district for everything that doesn't have another zoning district. So it's a default. We typically see ag from a standpoint or from a zoning standpoint as being 40 acres or more, because that's when you would the equalization can call it ag. That's when some of our rules set into place that you can have, say, a building without a house on it because it's considered ag. And so it is zoned ag, yes, but given its location being right next to Sioux Falls and a lot of other subdivided lots, we largely treat lots like this as a residential subdivision, even if it's not zoned residential.
It's not my fault that said he moved around me.
Commissioner?
He took the words out of my mouth. I'm not sure why we would be able to change our ordinance a little bit, if you will, to say that it's more of a residential when it's already zoned ag. Seems like that's a conflict in my terminology.
So.
It's either residential or it's ag. It can't be both just because of location.
Are the storage units a separate piece of property?
Yeah.
And the
And they're zoned industrial?
So, and I apparently didn't grab it off the printer with everything else, there is a definition for what's called a residential development area that includes that the subdivided lots that I just described. That says that even if it's zoned ag, that the residential development area, if there's more than four subdivided lots, then it's residential subdivision.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Barth.
I I'm not ready to take any action at this point. I I feel like you are in jeopardy with civilization coming your way. And, you know, I I read a a short story once where a stagecoach comes down with the sheriff's mail-order bride, and the two cowboys at the bar said, oh, civilization, we'd better move on. And I think I will make a motion to not declare nuisance at this time, but my suggestion would be to continue to tidy it up and and maybe somebody would like those logs if you're not going to grind them or or saw them up. I know that there's a grinder, a public and a private grinder somewhere around here.
I plan to make morgues out of them.
Okay.
I'd second that motion, and with the shortage of lumber, you got a gold mine laying there.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. I'm gonna make a comment. As I said, I drive by here a lot, and if you go from 12th Street from even from Marion Road to here, distance of a mile and a half, maybe two miles, there's a lot going on out there. And I I personally called the planning office and said, hey, there's a house that was knocked down six months ago, and it's sitting there with the tractors still around it, and it's a pile of rubble, and it needs to be cleaned up. And and we asked them to, and they did a good job. They they burned the the house rubble. But it's at least it's gone, and there's, but this whole area, my point is, is an area that is truly in a huge transition mode. I mean, there's mobile homes that are out there that I, they're a home to somebody, but, you know, and it's because that's just where they are in their life. But I look at some of the mobile home parks out in that area, and I I just shake my head too when I think about conditions of property. So I I feel we're doing the right thing by not declaring this a public nuisance. It is zoned ag. It is being cleaned up. I don't see rodents. I don't see, you know, issues with the property. So I'm gonna look for a, I have a motion in a second. All those in
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make one more comment.
Yes, sir.
You know, our our staff has to respond to citizens that bring them complaints, and it's us that are kind of the filter between the citizen and and the law. And I don't don't blame them. We've passed the ordinance that there can be nuisances.
That's a great point, yeah. And we're not faulting our planning office for bringing this, and they're doing their job, and they're just doing what they have to do. So great, great point, Commissioner. Okay, all those in favor of not declaring this a public nuisance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you both.
If I may, because Jeff had an interesting story there too. Maybe you remember Senator George McEwen, no, McGovern. We've got a school named after him, 1972 presidential candidate. And after he retired, doing his lectures, he tried to have a a business, a restaurant and an inn. And it's really neat read in the Wall Street Journal, I recommend everyone read it, but the caption is, "A Politician's Dream is a Businessman's Nightmare." And he says, "I learned first of all that over the past 20 years, America has become the most litigious society in the world. The second lesson I learned by owning the Stratford Inn is that legislators and government regulators must be careful and consider the economic and management burdens that we have imposed on our businesses." I appreciate everyone's, you know, comments, and yeah, I don't blame anyone else. I I realize that somebody drove by and made a complaint, so thank you for doing your best and reason and and resolving this, but I I will continue to clean things up, and I will move some of those pallets and boards and things like that to clean it up even more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Alrighty, we have, next on the agenda, issue a proclamation recognizing May 2nd through May 8th as National Correctional Officer and Employee Week. Jamie and Mr. Mattson, Warden Mattson here too? Mr. Gromer.
Squad here.
The B team.
Jamie Gravett, Juvenile Detention Center.
Jeff Gromer, I'm the chief deputy with the sheriff's office.
Ever since the early 80s, when Ronald Reagan was president, the first week of May has been declared the National Correctional Officer Correctional Worker Week. We've put together a proclamation for you, and we'd ask for the your approval.
Somebody wanna read it?
I don't have a copy of it. That's awful small. As I reach for these too. Whereas Minnea County is committed to public safety through professional service, correctional officers and employees are some of the most correctional officers and employees are some of the most resourceful, committed, patient, and persistent professionals essential to the day-to-day operations in our jail and juvenile detention center. And whereas correctional facilities across the U.S., both civilian and military, public and private, adult and juvenile are run by highly qualified and experienced individuals with a deep understanding of the challenges within the profession, serving admirably in many different capacities, including jail administrators, wardens, chaplains, nurses, supervisors, social workers, teachers, managers, and directors. And whereas corrections officers are trained law enforcement professionals dedicated to maintain, maintaining safe and secure correctional facilities, ensuring public safety, and are responsible for the custody, care, and rehabilitation of thousands of offenders every year. And whereas correctional officers and employees rise to meet any challenge and serve this honorable profession nobly and admirably to teach, train, mentor, counsel, and treat thousands of offenders by providing direction, hope, and a new focus while assisting with re-entry and life outside corrections. And now therefore be it resolved, the Minnehaha County Commission do hereby proclaim May 2nd through May 8th, 2021 as National Correctional Officer and Employee Week, and encourage other elected officials, leaders in the profession, and citizens to recognize them for the tremendous job they do and their exceptional performance of duties under the most difficult circumstances within the jail and juvenile detention center.
Very good. And thank you very much for the work you do and to all your staff and people that work with you. They, it's not work that everybody is cut out for, definitely.
It is definitely a very misunderstood and very difficult job. I think, I think I can speak for the JDC staff as well. The last year with the pandemic has created an incredibly difficult environment for people that already had a very hard job. I'm continually impressed with our correction staff on how truly hard they work in an environment that's really unseen and really difficult to understand unless you've been there.
Well said.
Thank you for all you do.
We appreciate your continued support. You guys have always been very supportive of both the JDC and the jail, and we, we appreciate that.
Comments, motion, second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I just have one quick comment. I, you know, when I came on the commission, there was so much I didn't know that I didn't know. And one of the great privileges for me has been getting to know folks in law enforcement. Didn't have anybody in my family who'd ever been involved in law enforcement, and I was one of those people with, that was just kind of thankful that I didn't have to know anything about it. But it, truly remarkable people, and just am very thankful for all the work that you guys do and that your staff does every day.
And for the last four years, you've been the liaison to the sheriff and to the jail, and you've learned a lot.
Been a great privilege.
Commissioner.
I would have to echo what she says, but also say that people that work, I believe, in law enforcement, corrections, and JDC do it because it's a hard issue. It's not necessarily a paycheck, because I don't think you would do those jobs for a paycheck. I think you do them for the impact that you have on other people's lives. And, I mean, everybody's got a calling of where they should be, but this is a really tough calling, especially in today's society. There's more criticism than there is pats on the back, so thank you for what you do.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, authorized chair to sign the 2020 law in Minnehaha County, 4-H Advisory Salary MOU with SDSU Extension for 4-H and Youth Programming. Mr. Martinell, good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. Chuck Martinell, SDSU Extension, Minnehaha County Extension Department, 4-H Program Advisor. This morning, I come for you to ask if you guys would consider having the chairman sign the MOU for the upcoming year or for 2021. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Mr. Chair.
This was.
Second.
This was actually due a little while ago. It's taken a long while to go through the, the system and stuff, and so we're thankful that it got this far, so.
Questions? Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we are going to a briefing that we tried a couple of weeks ago on inmate population trends report for Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. Notice I put Minnehaha first. Bill Garnos, are you on the phone?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. I've, I've been asked to tell you that you have one of your USD classmates here in the, in the audience. So he just wanted to make sure he said aye. It's Dave Baumeister.
Wow.
The floor is yours, sir.
I was not saying anything. Are you ready to go? Trish, are you gonna be looking through slides for me?
She's shaking her head, yes.
All right, great. Good morning, I'm sorry this got delayed a couple of more weeks. I did wanna just spend a few minutes with you showing the information I pulled together. I don't wanna spend a lot of time with the information, just kind of showing you how it's organized, what's there, because it's a pretty deep dive into the data. I had the privilege of being up there for Easter, visiting my mother for the first time in a year, and was hoping I could bore you in person with this, but we'll have to do it this way. Trish, let's just go next. Ooh, he skipped. Okay, back a couple. Yeah. There we go, the table of contents one. Just to show you what was in the study that I did for Lincoln County, there's an executive summary, talk a little bit about the previous inmate population studies I've done for Lincoln and Minnehaha. And then we do a deep dive into the inmate population trends for both counties, review inmate population projections for both. And then there's some appendices, which are just data tables for Lincoln County, showing all their inmates when they were scattered all over. Next. So the executive summary does have, it shows how the report is organized. There's about twenty, twenty-five pages of key findings, if you can't bear to go through. All the data tables and graphs with the backup materials all in the reports. I'd also remind you that there's a, right after the table of contents, there's a list of just the graphs and tables. So if you wake up in the middle of the night wondering, what was that average daily population of federal inmates? That's an easy way to find it, is just going to the graphs and tables. Okay, next. So the previous inmate studies that I've been able to do for you all, next. In Lincoln County, I first did a study for them back in 2017, and then I updated their study in 2019 when they were pursuing their own facility. Okay, next. For you all, I first did some work with you all back in nineteen ninety-nine, which then led to the construction of the downtown facility. And then Sheriff Milstead called me back in 2013 to do an update, because you were full. And I spent some time working with your county's Criminal Justice Advisory Committee on that. And then I continued to stay involved for, until about 2017, mostly just updating graphs and tables so that we could continue to monitor the inmate population and projections as you all were pursuing jail planning. And, and I've not been involved with any of your data since 2017 or the project. So I was, it was nice to be able to get updated on what's all transpired there since then. Next. Okay, inmate trends. I hope everybody's had their coffee this morning. Next. Just show you what I've got for Lincoln County. I took a look at their total average daily population, their annual breakdown by facility, where they've been housing their inmates, and then the cost that they've been paying for housing inmates elsewhere. And you'll hear me talk a lot about this term ADP, or average daily population. And I think most of you know what that means, but obviously Lincoln County, just like your county, inmate population goes up and down every day. So we look at averages for the month to try to not have to shoot for a moving target, so that we have some idea what the trends look like over long term. And I'll show you what those numbers look like. Next. So this is Lincoln County's inmate population over the last twelve years. This is all of their inmates every month over the last twelve years, some of their trends. You'll notice all of my graphs start to look the same after a while. But I want you to see the numbers, I want you to see the trends. I wanted to show kind of the parameters for planning purposes of, it was as low as it got and as high as it got. And then, you know, the data is there to continue to update and, and to try to do some analysis from. Next. I also did a deep dive into the data, the monthly data, over just the last three years, because for a lot of these things, I was trying to figure out what impact there was from the pandemic. I did another project in another state, which had, which showed a very significant impact as soon as we hit March of 2020. But you'll see a number of these in my material. I looked at what was happening from the beginning of 2018 through February of 2020, and then what has happened in the ten months since then, just to see what, if any, impact the pandemic has had on any of these trends and numbers. Okay, next. And then this is a breakdown of where their inmate population has been held by facility. The black at the bottom are those they've held at your facility. The gray was when they had them scattered through half a dozen other jail facilities around the state while you all were full and growing. I'd also have you note that for the last three years, Lincoln County's average daily population has been relatively stable, forty-four, forty-six, forty-five inmates over the last three years, is what they've been having to find housing for. And then in 2020, they all came back under your roof. Next. Then I took a look at the annual inmate housing cost, and this is not inmate transportation. This is just what they're paying other jurisdictions to hold their inmates for them. One of the things you'll notice is that over the last three years, while their, while the inmate numbers have stayed fairly stable, the amount they're paying for inmate housing has, has gone up significantly. And, and the main reason is because when they were housing them out, they were housing them out at places that were charging them sixty-five dollars a day, and your per diem is higher. So it's the same number of inmates, but just a higher per diem, so that's translated into higher inmate housing costs for them. But the lower per diem was offset by transportation and running inmates all over the place. Okay, next. For Minnehaha County, the data that I looked at was I looked at the monthly bookings, just to see the volume of people coming into the facility. Looked at your average daily population of all of the inmates that you're holding for everybody. I did a couple of different annual breakdowns, one of them by facility, to show where you've been housing your inmates. And I also took a look at the numbers you've been having out on electronic monitoring and out of custody, since those are inmates in your, under your supervision and control, but are not occupying a jail bed. And since the whole purpose here was to be looking at rental bed capacity, and I wanted to focus on those two areas, which I'll show you the numbers for here in a second. Also wanted to look at the annual average daily population by jurisdiction, to just show the numbers of different folks that you all provide inmate housing services for. And then finally, the high and the low daily population range. Your inmate population goes up and down every day, so I wanted to show how much it fluctuates typically each month, above and below that average, since you have to provide it for those typical monthly peaks. Okay, next. So this is the average daily population each month of all the inmates in the Minnehaha County jail system over the past sixteen years. A couple of different things you'll notice is obviously the high and the low, you'll notice the trend. But I've also put in these vertical lines to show, when we did the study in 2013, this is what we were looking at, at that point. By the time I was done and being involved in 2017, we got kind of another window into your inmate population trends, and then the current update since 2017 of what's happened since then. So it kind of shows you what we were looking at at the time decisions were being made and the data that we had available. Next. So again, I took, this is again, all inmates, and wanted to take a look at what happened leading up to the pandemic, and then what has happened since then. And one of the things this shows is, obviously, there was a dramatic drop as soon as we hit March and April, May of 2020. But then it has quickly rebounded, and it has rebounded back to where we were at pre-pandemic in terms of your total inmate population. So there was clearly an impact, but it's over. Next. Now, this is how you have distributed the inmates by facility over the past sixteen years. So you see the, the gray, that was the inmates that were being held at the CCC up until 2018. The jail numbers are at the bottom. And one of the things you'll notice is that lighter part on the top in stacked bars recently are the number of inmates that are out on electronic monitoring or out of custody. So they're not taking up a jail bed, but you're still responsible, the sheriff's still responsible for them. Okay, next. This is by jurisdiction, and this is one of the things that makes, you know, doing your inmate trends so complicated, is because you're also holding inmates, not just for Lincoln County, but for other counties. You've been holding federal inmates as space permits, and back a while, you were also holding DOC inmates when you have space available and a CCC. So this just kind of shows you the distribution of your inmate population by jurisdiction. Obviously, the bulk of the inmates are, are yours. Next. So then I wanted to look at just Minnehaha County inmates. And to all the planning process, we know that you're housing inmates for everybody, but we wanted to look first and foremost at just Minnehaha County. What are your inmate numbers doing? Forget about the feds, everybody else's needs. What's happening with just Minnehaha County inmates? And that's what this graph represents. Again, you can see you've hit a high of five hundred and thirty-seven as an average daily population, one month of just Minnehaha County inmates. Next. Again, this is that deep dive over the last three years. If I look at just Minnehaha County inmates, 2018, 2019, and for the first couple of months of 2020, you can see where the inmate population was averaging, but then the pandemic hit, we had a huge drop. But now it has again rebounded, and we are essentially right back to where we were at the start of the pandemic. So, you know, an impact, but it has rebounded. You didn't gain a bunch of time with a low inmate population. Next. So now projections, just to kind of show you what we're looking, using to look into the future with, particularly for you to make some decisions regarding rental bed capacity and for Lincoln County to know what they're gonna be facing for costs. Next. So these were the inmate population projections for Lincoln County. There was a range in the two studies that were done. You can see how the trends affect, lay out against what their actual inmate population has been. But for, for their planning purposes, I gave them a, a, a range to shoot for. And then for numbers and budgeting, I just used the midpoint between these two trend lines. Next. And here's the numbers. You'll notice with all my stuff and back in the studies, you get it in the graph, you get the numbers, and then you get boring narrative, because sometimes some need, you know, some people need numbers, some need to see it visually. And so for Lincoln County, these were the numbers I'm estimating as their average daily population of inmates they're gonna be needing to house. Okay, next. This is total inmates for Minnehaha County. You may remember back in 2013, the state had just passed that, what was it, Senate Bill Seventy? And we were attempting to estimate the impact of that, and there was some disagreement over whether it was gonna make jail populations go up or down. So we ran a couple of different models back then to try to estimate the impact of it. Now with a little bit more experience, since then, I've developed a new model that kind of shoots through the middle of it, and I'm using that Model Two for planning purposes. Okay, next. Again, here it shows you the numbers. Here was the, Model One was the baseline. Model Three was the adjustments that were made to try to accommodate the changes from that Senate Bill Seventy. Senate Bill 70. And then here's the, it's not the midpoint, but it's a model between the two that I'm recommending for planning purposes of total inmates that you'll be, the sheriff will be responsible for. Next. So talk about the per diem. Current per diem is $97.34 for other counties. The per diem is set by a complex formula. The feds have a very complicated formula for figuring out your actual cost per inmate per day. And they will pay that, but it has to be determined. They do a good job of trying to account for direct costs, indirect costs, but it's a formula used for capturing what your real cost per inmate per day is, and that's what they'll pay. Current per diem amount's been in place for about a year and a half. It has not yet been recalculated based on the jail's new construction, operational costs, inmate capacity, occupational level. It's my understanding from Chief Deputy Gromer, you're likely going to be starting that process of adjusting the per diem rate later this year or next year, but frankly, not completely convinced that it's going to go up or down significantly. You have obviously much greater costs and a higher cost operation, but it's being spread out over more inmates. So I don't know whether the recalculation is going to go up or down whenever it is you do it. Hopefully, it'll end up somewhere near where it's at right now. Next. So let's talk about the capacity of the jail. With the expansion, the Minnehaha County Jail has a total of 728 beds. All of these, the jail's currently staffed, we're operating a total of 580 of them. There are an additional 148 beds that are currently unoccupied and unstaffed, but available for future construction. So they're there, there's just no staff to run them yet, so it's, that housing unit's shut down. Next. And this gives you a breakdown of where those beds come from throughout the facility, and it's that Unit Control Number 3 that has the 148 beds that are not currently staffed or occupied. But that's what you've got right now as an existing resource. Okay, next. One of the other things, and this is really just an issue for me, is, you know, a jail bed is not a jail bed is not a jail bed. And so I, one of the things I like to take a look at is the type of inmate housing that your current capacity includes. And so of the 580 beds that you're currently operating and staffing, 76 of those beds are in single cells, about 244 of those beds are in double cells, two-person cells, and then about 260 of the beds are dormitory beds. And, you know, I think it's important to recognize the breakdown in the types of inmate housing that you're trying to get the inmates to fit within. One of the problems is these dormitory beds, all jails have them, and, you know, that's all, you know, they're cheaper to construct, but they're also more difficult to operate, a little less flexible for what inmates are going to work appropriately in a dormitory housing situation. Okay, next. It's my understanding that the new jail was also designed to support a couple additional layers of inmate housing potentially in the future with vertical expansion. So if you take the existing facility and add two more layers with 112 beds, that could bring you up to potentially in the future, total of 952 total beds. So, you know, you're going to be able to keep it, and one of the plans is to try to keep it under 1,000 beds on the existing site. So that's what you've got as a potential future resource as your needs and the needs of others grow. Okay, next. So while I was working on this, we did a very quick snapshot, one day of the inmate population at the Minnehaha County Jail. Chief Deputy Gromer just did a one-day snapshot to try to help show some of the things that we were talking about here. On that day, there were 565 inmates in the jail, and there were 55 inmates not in custody, meaning they were out on electronic monitoring or otherwise out of custody. Of the inmates in custody, 82% were Minnehaha County inmates. There were about 37 inmates from Lincoln County, 31 were federal, and 18 were from other counties, parole violators, and I think there was one DOC inmate. So this gives you some idea of the distribution typically of your inmate population. And the 465 inmates in custody represents an occupancy level of about 80% of the facility's current staff capacity. Okay, next. So this issue of inmates not in custody was not a big part of the study back in 2013, but it's something that has been growing and has been getting tracked better since then. Prior to the pandemic, from the start of 2018, about 14% of your inmates were not in custody, not occupying a jail bed. Out of the average daily population of 459 Minnehaha County inmates during this period, 41 of them were out on electronic monitoring, or about 9% of your inmate population, and 24 were otherwise out of custody. Apparently, a lot of these inmates are out on court-ordered furlough for treatment, so they have a court order to be released from the facility for typically substance abuse treatment. And then there's always a handful that are at the hospital for one thing or another, but they are inmates that are not occupying the jail bed. So I tried to track those pretty carefully. Next. So now we lay some of this all on top of each other, and this shows your projections for the next 10 years, those Minnehaha County in custody inmates, adding to that the Lincoln County inmates on top of that. And then the red line shows your current staff capacity of 580 beds to help do some future planning. Next. And here's where these numbers come from. You have the 10-year forecast, you have your total average daily population, then calculation of an estimated number not in custody, so I take those out, end up with your average daily population in custody, add that to Lincoln County's ADP, and come up then with an estimated inmate population, our best estimate of what it's going to, what your inmates are going to be looking like for those two counties only going forward. Okay, next. And then for Lincoln County, I had to show, I'm taking their inmate population estimates and using your current per diem and not increasing it or decreasing it, but just using that same per diem. This was what I was estimating they were going to be looking at for inmate housing costs, going from 1.7 million up to 2,200 over a 10-year period. Okay, next. So there is a thing called the 85% rule, and I wanted to explain it a little bit. Remember, we're dealing with an average here with ADP and using that for percentage. And so half the time, the inmate population is above it, half of the time, it's below it. So when you're planning beds, you need to accommodate those routine peaks over the ADP. And you also have to have enough capacity to be able to separate the inmates by gender and inmates with different security requirements. So if you have 500 inmates and 500 beds, they're never going to fit because you'll never have the perfect mix of males, females, minimum, medium, and maximum. So you need that additional capacity just for management and administrative purposes. And so when occupancy gets above 85% of capacity, it starts getting more and more difficult to accommodate inmates and put them into the right housing areas consistent with their classification and behavior. It doesn't mean that at 86% the facility shuts down, it's just a concept that once you hit a certain level, it gets harder and harder to properly place inmates, especially longer term. So you may have a female inmate coming in, all your female beds are full, but you got 10 beds in the male dormitory. Doesn't do you any good. Or you may have an inmate come in who requires maximum security housing, and all of your beds are in the dormitories. And so you've got an issue and have to move some folks around. So the closer you get to be in full, the harder it is to deal with those daily incoming inmates. Okay, next. So to put the 85% rule and apply it to the capacities, when you hit 493 inmates as an average daily population, that's when you're at that 85% level of your current staffed capacity. That recent snapshot showed an 80% capacity level. So you were still well within the 85% recommendation. And then when Unit 3 is staffed with its additional beds, then the new number will be 619 will be your ADP when you'd be hitting 85% of your full capacity. So those are kind of the benchmarks to watch, and that when you exceed those, that's when you need to be looking forward. Okay, next. So applying those against the Minnehaha County and the Lincoln County projected numbers, you can see where on the bottom you hit the 85% of current capacity and then the total number of beds, and then up top when you, in the blue lines, when you have the full capacity, and then also the 85% level when you open that additional inmate housing unit. And so you can use this for, you know, kind of looking to the future and deciding what needs to get done when. Okay, next. So here's where some of the numbers shook out again. Forecast years, Lincoln and Minnehaha combined inmates at 85% level, and then the 85% level of the full expanded capacity, and what that would then leave you for rental bed capacity. So after you've taken care of all of Minnehaha County's needs and Lincoln County's needs, it looks like there's still a little bit of rental bed capacity available for the next three years. When you hit Year 4, about 2024, you're going to need to be thinking about opening up that additional inmate housing unit and being ready to staff and run that. So here's some of the numbers, because I know that rental bed capacity is valuable both for operational costs and for those that rely on you to house their inmates. Okay, next. Almost done. Here's the final observations. Next. So first of all, Minnehaha and Lincoln County's combined inmate population is going to hit that 85% level of your current staff capacity by 2024. You know, as your and Minnehaha County's numbers increase, the number of beds available for other jurisdictions obviously decreases. Your combined inmate population is going to continue to increase and eventually hit that full staffed capacity by 10 years. So at that point, you know, you're out of beds and, and no wiggle room. Next. Your own in custody inmate population is going to continue to increase and will reach that 85% level in the next 10 years. And then staffing and occupying Unit Control Number 3 obviously is going to give you way more rental bed capacity as everybody's inmate population continues to increase. Okay, next. The purpose of this was to try to do something objective and independent on the inmate trends to try to help with planning and budgeting, providing some transparency and documentation, which is, I think, important in corrections these days, and to provide more data-driven means for assessing each county's current and future demand for beds and the capacity available and how long that's going to serve their needs. And then I think there's one more, is that it? Next. Well, then, I think the last thing is, I explained to Lincoln County that with all of this information, ultimately, it's up to the sheriff and the Minnehaha County Commission to decide when to open the additional inmate housing provided by Unit Control Number 3, when and how to increase the facility's staff to accommodate the higher capacity. Chief Deputy Gromer and I had some conversations about how long it took to staff up, both recruitment and training to operate the new larger facility. So there is a lead time. Just because you have the beds doesn't mean you can open that unit tomorrow. So there is a lead time that needs to be factored into opening that. How to address the recruitment and training of the additional staff that will be needed for the inmate housing and the additional facility capacity overall, and then ultimately analyzing the impact of these additional costs versus the potential revenue to be derived from holding inmates from other jurisdictions, not just Lincoln County, but the feds and everybody else. So hopefully, these numbers have been helpful to you all. It's helpful for the Lincoln County to know what they're looking at for inmate housing costs, and, and that's all I've got for you. So I appreciate your patience, be happy to answer any questions, or if you wanted to follow up with any later, I'd be happy to, you know, give you a long, boring answer off camera.
We'll go that way. Thank you, Bill. I appreciate it, a very detailed report. And I guess the only argument I would make is it probably won't be up to us to decide. It will be up to the people, when they make their own individual decisions, are they going to do something that ends them up in our custody or not? And we will adapt to them at that time, so.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions?
No matter how we try to look forward, you just, you don't see things coming like this pandemic. So, you know, I worked with another state where as soon as that pandemic hit, all of their inmate numbers dropped 20, 30% and stabilized at a new low level, about 20, 30% lower than what they had been. And we were looking at how long is it going to take to refill their capacity? And here, I didn't find that. Here, you're already there. You've already rebounded and are back to normal. So it was a blip for you all.
To me, that would indicate that we got the right people in jail, or the ones that are in jail are the ones that should be in jail.
Yep.
Okay.
So if there's anything else, hopefully, the numbers will give you some help, and if there's anything else I can do or answer for you, just let me know, I'm happy to help.
All righty. I don't see anybody raising any questions or comments, so thank you again, sir.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Nice to you all.
Thank you.
You too. All righty. We have a briefing on the Highway 130 corridor study. Shannon Schultz, Shannon, are you on the phone?
I think Shannon is here in person, live and in person. He was here earlier.
Hey, Shannon.
Hi, good morning. Hi, I'm Shannon Schultz, Minnehaha County Highway Assistant Highway Superintendent. I'm here today to talk about County Highway 130. There's a study going on, we're at the tail end of it, and there's going to be a public meeting June 1st. So what I'm presenting today is actually a presentation prepared by our consultant. They could not be here today, so I'm going to go through it. Not everybody has the same passion for traffic engineering that I do, so I won't spend a lot of time in those details. But I will say that SEH did a very good job, and the integrity of the input in terms of traffic is really high, and so I believe the study results are very high. So the study's going to talk about future projected traffic, mostly from Foundation Park and as well as background traffic. And then those changes require lane configurations to accommodate that new capacity, and that's what this presentation's about. Crooks Community Center is the location of the public meeting, and it will be 5:30 to 7:30 with a formal presentation at 5:45. It'll also be broadcast live via Zoom, and then it'll be recorded for later viewing. Of course, we'll be handing out comment cards and hopefully collecting a lot of good information. There's so much data out there that this will be the first time a lot of people are seeing this information, and the amount of changes are happening quite fast. And so I think it's a very good thing to have this presentation presented to the public via online. And then also, it's really just a commercial to come to the public meeting. So with that, I'm going to get into the, to the presentation itself. Second slide, please, Trish, and I'll just say that. Trish, the next slide. So there's the location. It is west of I-29 and east of County Highway 137, which is the Road to Crooks, and also north of Foundation Park. Next slide, please. So crash history, safety improvements were looked at, traffic volumes, existing and future projections. We're going to talk a little bit about existing and no build, and then what projections might be needed in the near term and the far term. And then what projections might be needed in the near term and the far term, being basically around the year twenty thirty and also the year twenty forty-five. There's gonna be some access management considerations, uh, certainly is part of the study, but definitely more when we get into design here, um, either later this year or next year. And then we can talk about some, uh, roadway design impacts. So please, next slide. The crash history there, uh, you can see, uh, there's a little red dot there at the intersection of one thirty-seven and one thirty. That is really the impetus of this study. Uh, this study is paid for, uh, with some PL funds, and our share is just under twenty percent. The total cost of this study is seventy-five thousand dollars. At the time of this study, we knew that this intersection was kind of a hotspot. And so just luck would have it, uh, you know, when this study was being requested from the MPO, uh, Foundation Park didn't exist, well, excuse me, the Amazon development didn't exist. Foundation Park was definitely in existence, but slowly growing. And then, and then Amazon came along, and we were just lucky enough to be kind of scoping this study out. And so that really changed kind of the, the major discussions regarding this study. And so again, it was just kind of a lucky circumstance there, serendipity. So there is, uh, some history there. Uh, of those twenty-nine crashes, um, there's a good amount of them, thirteen of them, at that intersection. And it, it kinda is an anomaly when you look at average crash rates for those kinds of intersections, and there's a factor there of one point eight two times the normal critical crash rate, so that hits our radar. And I think worth noting here, especially worth noting here, is the ten involved at least one southbound vehicle, so that's leaving Crooks and hitting that intersection. So, um, keep that in mind when we talk about some intersection options in the future. Next slide. Traffic volumes here again, this, this gets down to the, to the traffic science, and we're not gonna spend a lot of time on this. Uh, but those are the turning movements for both, uh, forty-eight hour counts, and, uh, it's been adjusted a little bit because of COVID. Interesting thing about traffic project, or traffic patterns, the total ADT has really not been changed, but the peak hour was slightly down. So in other words, those trips are still occurring, they're just not occurring at normal peak hours. But the peak hour was adjusted at about ten percent to account for the, uh, the little blip in the COVID traffic. So, next slide. So significant growth. The Sioux Falls MPO, uh, has a, a twenty forty-five master plan. In addition to that, there's a regional, uh, model developed for Foundation Park, including the big developments that are occurring, and all those were inputs into this traffic study. The numbers in red there really tell the story. And those numbers in red reflect the twenty forty-five traffic volumes over existing conditions and, and, you know, primarily looking at that four point five on the bottom right of your screen and the, the five times existing traffic. You know, those are upwards of twenty thousand cars a day, whereas the existing volumes are, you know, four thousand, two thousand, and that's a pretty big change in not that much time. So, um, that's really why we're doing this study and, and need to address these needs to meet them, the demand, you know? Any essential purpose of the transportation agency is to serve commerce, and that's what we're gonna try and do here. Next slide. Traffic volumes at Foundation Park are significant. You can see there in the table, existing twenty twenty-two and twenty forty-five traffic volumes. Uh, they break it down by different directions, to and from Highway one thirty, in the AM and the PM. And again, you can just see this, this major development and growth happening. Yeah, the presentation, uh, during the public meeting, we'll probably get into this a little bit more, but in terms of time, I just wanna keep moving. Thank you. Trish? Again, more data. You gotta believe in the data for the input so that you can trust the output, and that is certainly the case here. And so the highlights in this are, uh, circled in red, just really emphasizing again the major, major traffic volumes. And I'll just point out the intersection at Marion Road, which is the intersection with Foundation, or the, the Foundation Park development comes south of Highway one thirty. It's projected that nine hundred cars in an hour are gonna wanna turn left if they're westbound on one thirty. There's only a handful of intersections in Sioux Falls that see that kind of volume. So, so this is really a game-changing, uh, situation here on our little two-lane highway, our county or Highway one thirty. Next slide. Same situation here, that, and I kind of was talking about the twenty forty-five, nine hundred cars in an hour turning left, and that's, that's the point I wanted to make here, that, that previous slide really talked about what's gonna happen basically in ten years. And so, um, we, we still need to do some capacity improvements throughout this corridor, uh, not just the intersections, but also in terms of throughput, which is, you know, how many lanes do you need coming off the interchange? I do wanna point out that the interchange isn't really part of the formal study, but because it's a major trip generation in itself, it, it, the, those inputs need to be input into the model to, uh, properly analyze this, uh, which was a little bit of good fortune for the study again, because, uh, the state is kind of going through an intersection or interchange analysis, and so some of that input, uh, was available for this study. And, and again, it just improves the integrity of our study, so that's all good. Next slide. In the world of traffic engineering, there's warrants, warrants for turn lanes, stop signs, yield signs, or even roundabouts. And basically, anytime there's an always stop control or a stop control warrant is met, the, the warrants are met for also a roundabout. You can see here that, uh, some of these intersections are definitely meeting warrants in the future twenty thirty condition as well as twenty forty-five. The next slide kind of brings this into a little more focus in terms of each intersection. Um, excuse me, the following slide. So this one really just talks about, pardon me, the safety of roundabouts. And this is worth taking some time and digesting, because a na, a standard intersection, a normal four-legged intersection has thirty-two points of conflict. Anytime you have a conflict, you have a potential for a crash, whereas a roundabout only has eight. So they're far safer. And that's really the, the driving point from this slide is, is to just note that, again, I said earlier that in the southbound direction from Crooks, the majority of those accidents were southbound traffic, and the roundabout would, um, minimize those crashes. And in fact, um, there's so many roundabouts, and there's so much data out there to study. The severity rate of roundabouts versus a normal intersection, the severity, the, the number of severity, the number of severe crashes reduced eighty-five to ninety percent. So it's nothing that can't be ignored. Next slide. So this is the, basically by intersection basis, you can, you can see in twenty thirty and twenty forty-five, the no build, the minor stop, the traffic signal, the always stop in the roundabouts. So the red Xs obviously aren't recommended, the green checkmarks are recommended, and the yellow checkmarks are sort of a workable solution, but maybe not the best use or the safest intersection. And so this again is the intersection of County Highway one thirty and one thirty-seven, which is the road to Crooks. You can see in twenty thirty and in twenty forty-five, both the always stop and the roundabout are recommended. However, due to safety, the roundabout is recommended maybe higher, at a higher level of safety. Uh, when you see things like level of service, A, B through F, it's much like a school grade. A is excellent, very free thro, free-flowing traffic, and F is basically gridlock. And so that's a graduate scale. I guess next slide, we can talk about the next intersection. So this is four seventy-first street, also known as Marion Road. Uh, the no build obviously isn't gonna work, and either at the twenty thirty or twenty forty-five scenario, a traffic signal achieves a decent level of service, B in twenty thirty and also C in twenty forty-five. The always stop control just will not work in twenty forty-five. Interestingly, because of the high volumes, uh, a roundabout does work to a point, and then it, it just breaks, breaks down. And so really, the only option at Marion Road is a full-blown, uh, traffic signal intersection. Next slide, please. This is a Cottonwood. Cottonwood is a kind of an industrial development, uh, just off the interstate to the west. And, uh, you can see there that the green checkmarks are favoring basically existing conditions. Uh, you do have a level of service D, which is really not recommended. It does work with the minor stop on, on Cottonwood. Uh, but really, the ultimate solution there in twenty forty-five is to signalize it, and that really does benefit because of platooning effect, in other words, progression of traffic through signals. It does, it does make also Marion function a little better, uh, with a signal there at Cottonwood in twenty forty-five. Interestingly enough, and in the roundabout, um, in twenty forty-five operates at the same level of service. And that's something that'll have to be looked at, uh, during design as well. Uh, interesting to have a roundabout that close to interchange ramps. So that'll be good discussion to have with the public and as well as, uh, the rest of the decision-makers when we get further into design. Next slide. So these are the ramps. Again, this isn't part of the study, but it is important information to understand that there's gonna be some changes required at the terminals of the ramps. And basically, it's basically perpetuating existing conditions kind of with minor stop controls. This is really something that the state is gonna benefit from having this information, and, uh, we do have to be cognizant of these changes probably aren't gonna happen at the same time. The state has their own schedule, and so do we. And so, um, you know, this is gonna be one of those piecemeal things that are, it's gonna happen over time in, in multiple phases. Next slide. Again, same conversation with the ramps. Uh, this is more the northbound ramp, which would be on the east side of I twenty-nine. And you can see again that there's fairly high levels of service with either a signal, always stop, or roundabouts. And, um, I guess we'll leave it at that. Next slide. So long range, again, there's this magic number of twenty thousand vehicle cars a day, and again, the nine hundred left turners hitting Marion. And so projecting levels of service, we really need to do something there with not only the nodes, which are the intersections, with traffic capacity, but also the throughput, which is line configuration. And you can see there that, uh, three lanes and five lanes are being discussed, and you can see how those impacts, uh, generate different design speeds. Uh, when you talk about design speed, you're talking about how many cars move through an hour, and again, you're talking about efficiency and mobility. So those are all considerations to be considered during design. Next slide. Access management there, especially around the area around Cottonwood, you can see industrial developments on both sides of Highway one thirty. And really, really, those, those multiple accesses just need to be cleaned up to be safer and operate more efficiently. The city of Crooks has done some aggressive annexations, to say the least, and so as that land that's been recently annexed starts to develop, they're gonna have to come up with, uh, you know, circulation roads and how, how that neighborhood is gonna develop, whether it's, you know, apartments, industrial, commercial. And so there's just a lot more to come, and how roads will circulate away from County Highway one thirty, but we're really are gonna be concerned about those intersections and accesses to Highway one thirty. And there's some opportunities there to make some improvements, and we'll discuss that more, uh, when we get into individual meetings with landowners. Next slide. So these are access management design standards for the city of Sioux Falls. County Highway one thirty is the regional growth area for the city of Sioux Falls. It's the northern boundary. And as the city of Sioux Falls continues to grow, Foundation Park is, uh, annexed into the city of Sioux Falls, and they continue to annex property adjacent to Foundation Park. It hasn't quite reached Highway one thirty yet, but I think it's only a matter of time before it does. So that's why this slide is here, to talk about what an arterial street. And when we're talking about twenty thousand cars a day and nine hundred left turns in an hour, we are talking about a five-lane urban arterial type section. And that is just a really big change to digest and understand and how quickly that's gonna be needed. And that's why, again, this slide is shown here. It shows their requirements, and namely, it's quarter-mile spacing for full access, and you have signal space that that quarter-mile spacing. Um, you really don't allow rural roads or even private accesses to intersect that. Uh, you usually want that to be a collector and hire, uh, so we have shared driveways, frontage roads, and those kinds of things. And, uh, you know, long-term, the county probably isn't gonna own this road forever. At some point, it's not gonna be ours, so we're an interim owner. But while we're doing, going through the design, these are the kinds of things we'll have to consider, because what the future roadway is gonna look like definitely is gonna inform and influence what we need to build in the short term. Next slide. So the near term, one to three years, basically, they're just highlighting the needs that exist today. On the upper part of your screen, you see two options for Highway one thirty and one thirty-seven. One is a standard intersection with some, uh, added turn lanes, the other one's a roundabout. Both of those have bearing degrees of impact on adjacent lands. Uh, that landowner has contacted Cindy, the commissioner, Commissioner Hybaker, as well as our office, and I've talked to them. And, uh, they're gonna come in and we're gonna talk about some more details. Uh, but basically, this is the information we're gonna be sharing with them. Again, this is pretty informative to understand that these, these changes are upon us, and we have to react to them to serve commerce safely. And, uh, you know, again, this need is there today, and looking at traffic directions, it's only gonna get worse quickly. Next slide. So this, again, is just a blow up of those two options. You can see the additional turn lanes, as well as how the roundabout might function. You can also see that the roundabout has offset a little bit to the east to offset, uh, impacts to the, those properties. Uh, the way the roundabout works, you really can't have a driveway immediately adjacent to the roundabout, it's just too unsafe. You're undoing what you're trying to achieve, so that's not a good option. And so there's gonna have to be discussions with that landowner and, and just explore some, some things, potentially a buyout was not out of the question. Next slide. So this is Marion Road, four hundred and seventy-first street. Uh, this really, again, has changed the focus of the original impetus of the study. We were gonna really look at one thirty, one thirty-seven. We actually have money in our budget to address that in terms of construction dollars. And that needs to be revisited because of things like Foundation Park and, uh, the Shwan's development and, and the pressure really on this intersection. So the near-term developments are a signal with turn lanes. And it's kind of, uh, really just a, looking at things to come, because this is, by comparison, what's needed in twenty forty-five, this is a small intersection. It's hard to understand how much traffic, nine hundred cars in an hour wanting to turn left is. It's definitely a dual-left situation. So there's an example of what that might look like in the near term. Next slide. So short-term, ten years plus is that twenty thirty horizon. Um, I think the next slide might, might zoom in a little bit more. Trish? Yeah. So there you go. You see all the turn lanes, you see some gored-out areas which are needed for lane transitions. And again, it's just quite a big intersection, and it's only gonna get bigger in twenty forty-five. Trish, if you could go back a slide? Thank you. That just shows the corridor with some, um, you know, connectivity to the, to the ramps, as well as some interchanges, or some traffic configurations at Cottonwood. So two slides, please, Trish. Yep, there's Cottonwood. See some opportunities there to clean up some accesses, and, um, yeah, you know, this, this is what the road needs to look like, something like it in the, in the future. And, and it's gonna be a really good public meeting, and I hope all you commissioners can make it, because it's gonna be a lot of good discussion with the public. Next slide. So long-term, twenty forty-five, uh, Trish, if you wanna zoom into, to some more detail there, you can see the throughput, which is the lanes. I believe that's a five-lane situation there with a blown-up intersection. And, uh, I would like to point out that you see the match line on the bottom part of the slide, the match line with Marion Road. Marion Road is currently being designed by the city of Sioux Falls, and they have not got an, an ultimate configuration, what they're gonna do. Uh, we do believe, and we've been told, that whatever they're gonna do is gonna be built in twenty twenty-three. And so by the time that we need to get into design, our match points will be readily identifiable and can be part of our, uh, master planning and design as well. Next slide. Here is the full-blown intersection of Cottonwood, and this is a significant change, uh, really is, uh, from what we see out there today. And again, just thinking about what's going on east of this corridor, you've got an interchange and an interstate with, with bridges. And so, you know, the interchange is definitely gonna take on a different character, uh, very soon. So again, just indicative of what we need to do to meet the needs. Next slide. Schedule-wise, uh, like I said, we're at the end of our planning study. We're gonna have a public meeting, and, uh, our planning study will, uh, include, incorporate all the comments from the public from the meeting, as well as written comments. And that should be done by the end of June with a final report presented to you folks as a commission, as well as the MPO. Incidentally, next week, I will be presenting the same presentation to the MPO, um, so some of you might see this multiple times before it's over. Yay. Next slide. Uh, yeah, any questions? There's a lot of information. Again, I, I kinda glossed over. slide. Yeah. Any questions? There's a lot of information. Again, I kind of glossed over the techie details about traffic inputs and stuff. But, you know, in terms of brevity, I think that's necessary for this forum.
Okay. Questions? Commissioner?
Shannon, is it the county that needs to build this, and then we just turn it over to the city, the Crooks? I mean, is the state going to go in on this?
It's a great question, Jeff. And my answer is, I believe we have a responsibility to serve commerce, to serve commerce in the short term, which is somewhere out between 2030 and 2035. No one has a crystal ball. How soon the city of Sioux Falls is going to annex up to Highway 130? You know, Crooks has already annexed some adjacent to Highway 130. And so now it's a property boundary between two cities currently owned by the county. So it's a great question, and I don't have an answer. I think as a collective body, both county, MPO, and individual cities, that's where the answer lies. And I don't have that for you today.
Great question. Next week at the MPO.
It's a great question. Very, very good question.
Mr. Chairman, I heard that the governor was opposed to roundabouts. Is that...
This is true.
That's true?
The way you said it is 100% correct. FHWA and the DOT are in support of roundabouts. The governor is not.
Commissioner Heiburger?
So if the city is going to, are they going to do their paving in 2023? Or are they just going to have their plan in 2023? Because I just see that if, you know, obviously, we can't have a four-lane road coming up to gravel and...
That's correct.
So...
2023 is construction.
So we have got to be ready to do that intersection by 2023.
Not necessarily. I would like to be, but not necessarily, only because you can always do a transition. What you said, it makes a lot of sense in terms of wisdom, in terms of spending dollars. You don't want to do a transition and then tear it out a year later. So there's some rooms for opportunity to make that a seamless. And I think we have time. The bigger question is, do we have budget? And also, a lot of this is going to hinge upon the success of our right-of-way negotiations.
I guess the only question I have, it hasn't really been addressed by anything, but it kind of sticks out to me, is we got a railroad crossing real close to one of the intersections. And how much talk has there been with the Development Foundation or those economic development people about what kind of rail traffic is going to be seen there? And I mean, you're talking 900 cars an hour turning, and now you've got a railroad, a train across the road. I mean, that's got to factor in somehow. And I don't see that addressed here anywhere.
You're correct. Currently, that road is owned by the township. The township has really not a lot of skin in the game. The city definitely does. The city...
It's across the county road, too, though.
Correct. Further to the northwest, you're right. I was on-site last year with the rail company, as well as the city and the township. The city was talking about a flyover, so as not to stop traffic on Marion. The railroad company had zero interest in that concept. And so I don't know where that stands now that basically the city's kind of moved into taking ownership of North Marion. I guess that's another question yet to be seen. In the short term, you know, there's no way they're going to get that design built and approved by 2023. So I can tell you that's going to be an aggregate crossing in the short term.
But Shannon, you're talking about the township road. What about, I mean, it also crosses...
130.
It crosses 130.
So at the time, when our section of road, it'll be redone, it will be an aggregate crossing. And I believe because of the level of traffic, it will probably have gates.
It does have gates, doesn't it?
Um, no. I don't, I think it just has...
Lights. Just has lights.
Just the lights for now. But in the future, it will have gates. And, you know, those rail crossings, the lights alone are, you know, $30,000, $300,000. And usually, we do a 10% cost share. And if you put gates in there, it's probably doubling that number. And so we'll have a 10% cost share when the time comes.
I see fingers. Okay.
There's not a lot of distance between, I'm just, I'm going back to the railroad. There's not a lot of distance between Marion Road and the railroad crossing if you're talking 900 cars. I'm just saying, there's not a lot of space in there.
Not a lot of space. The traffic does die off significantly west of Marion. So really, between Interstate and Marion is really the 20,000 cars a day that we're talking about. And then to the west of there, you basically have background traffic and commuter traffic.
Yeah.
So it's a little different animal. Two lanes will definitely serve that far into the future.
Okay. Mr. Chairman. Ms. Schreber? Yeah, please.
I was just going to clarify what Shannon just clarified, that most of the traffic is going to be to the east of that railroad crossing as it goes across the Highway 130. I do really want to thank you for coming this morning. And this is a tremendous amount of information. And tremendous changes for folks that live out in that area. I really thank the highway department for, you know, you said it was lucky, but you guys are proactive in thinking about these issues. And that's placed us in a position where we have really good information to try to make difficult decisions going forward. So I really want to thank you for that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Ms. Schreber?
We are very lucky to have a professional highway department in Minnehaha County. We have the best roads in the state. I don't think we own any roads this wide. But Ballpark, do you have any idea what this project might cost if we...
I'm sorry, I don't. You know, construction-wise, it's not really expensive. There's not a lot of hills to deal with. You know, it's really just a width issue and a right-of-way issue. So I'm sorry, I don't have any idea on cost. It really does depend on how big you go when you build it. Obviously, I could say, historically speaking, we're looking at between $950 and $1.1 million a mile for normal highway reconstruction, you know? And so it's just going to be up from that.
We will find out. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you for your time. Again, June 1st, public meeting, Crooks Community Center, 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to look for a motion to appoint Tiffany Butler to a five-year term on the Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Craig.
Dooley Commission Office. This item's an example of the wide depth of different issues that you guys handle here on the county commission. The Housing and Redevelopment Commission is responsible for the physical structure of Safe Home. That project began approximately a decade ago. Carol Muller from the commission office was pretty instrumental in helping get that off the ground. The governing structure of the HRC is set up in such a way that four members are appointed from the public, and then you have one commissioner liaison. Tiffany Butler has indicated interest in serving an additional five-year term. Her day job is with the Carol Institute, so she does have a significant amount of insight into some of the challenges and issues that residents of Safe Home may face. So the action that's being requested today is that you would make a motion to appoint Tiffany Butler to serve a five-year term on the Housing and Redevelopment Commission.
That's my motion.
Second. Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulate Ms. Butler on her reappointment. Thank you.
And thank her.
What's that?
And thank her.
And thank her, yes.
That's a lot of, a big commitment.
Okay. Authorized Chair to sign the construction manager-at-risk contract for the highway facility. Mr. Dewey.
Since, Craig Dewey, Commission Office, again. Since working on the JL expansion project starting back in 2017, the county has utilized the construction manager-at-risk process to help limit liability, or not liability, but cost exposure for construction projects. And so as we have been planning for a highway facility, in constructing that new maintenance facility, the county has worked again to help set up that CMAR structure. There was a competitive request for proposal process that yielded three interested parties. Those parties were interviewed. And of those three, the CMAR that is being recommended by Commissioners Karski and Benega, who serve on that committee, as well as the rest of us on the committee, is Henry Carlson Construction. And so what these two agreements together form are the agreement that will be the basis of payment for that cost of work for the CMAR contract that will develop that guaranteed maximum price. And then lastly, the other agreement is another architect's contract that is regarding the general conditions. We do have Dick Strasberg from Tegra, who serves as our owners rep. He can answer some more of the technical questions, if you have any regarding the CMAR process. And then lastly, the item has been reviewed following negotiations by Jim Widerich, the county's external counsel, who is with Woods Fuller. Would be happy to answer any questions. Before I turn that over to you, the importance of passing this agreement here today is because as we have developed the cost model per conversations that we've had with you last week, commodity price markets have experienced significant fluctuation this year. And signing this contract would allow Henry Carlson to lock in steel prices. There have been anywhere between 10% increases and 40% increases across the steel market, along with time ranges anywhere from 20- to 30-week delays, all the way up to 80-some week delays. So the importance to be able to keep the highway project on schedule and within budget regarding these increases is pretty imperative. That being said, if you have any questions, would be happy to answer them, or Dick Strasberg can.
My only comment would be is, so far, we've gotten more than our money's worth from everybody involved in this project. Thank them.
Henry Carlson have certainly been great partners.
So I'm looking for a motion to give me permission to sign the contract.
I would make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the construction manager-at-risk contract.
Okay.
Motion in a second. Looks like Commissioner Barth had to step out. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero with one absent.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Craig. We are down to liaison reports. Craig, do you mind just giving a quick update?
And your second, did he?
On the Makita-Lakita meeting that you went in my place last week. I mean, any quick comments on that? I'm putting you on the spot. I know you went there for me. And also the chamber board meeting, I believe.
Yes, both of those. So the Makita-Lakita board meeting covered some of the process regarding the merger of those two organizations, the Minnehaha County Economic Development Corporation, or Association, rather, and then Lincoln County of the similar name. And so each of the governing boards have passed the resolution to authorize the merger. They are waiting for additional paperwork to be processed by the different municipalities that are located in each county that are outside of Sioux Falls. So that process is moving forward. And certainly, having served on those boards, Commissioner Karski, you know that there's a lot of work that is done in those small communities to help support further economic development and create jobs in those communities. I would say that outside of that comment on updates regarding that merger process, the executive director continues, Jesse Fonkretz, continues to work on the golf tournament, as well as other activities for the year. It's getting close to the end of his first year that he has been with the organization. And then the chamber board meeting, there was a big focus, again, diversity and inclusion are a big, and equity is a big part of what the chamber has taken on. And there was recently a summit that was the same name, to support inclusion. And so Tamie and Dicert, who does work with the county on the triage center and other justice reform projects, was also at that chamber board meeting and spoke about basically challenging the members and getting input from the board members about how do we take the next steps. The summit was great, but we don't want that to be, that's not the end goal. That's just part of the process. And how can the community be proactive in supporting inclusion for that? So those were the main items from both of those meetings.
Thank you, Craig. Any other liaison reports?
I just would note that I also went to a meeting for you last week for the triage, or the LINK board meeting. And it was a good meeting. Things are on schedule for the LINK to open in early June. We did amend the general contract with Avera to provide, there's some additional funding that we received to provide for security. So that was done. And then we also cleaned up, cleaned up the contract to reflect that when the detox ends for the county at the end of May, that Avera will take over the licensing for that. So it was generally a very good meeting. Things are, things are on track.
Ms. Heiburger?
Just to note that Commissioner Benega and I had our JDC meeting this last week with Jamie, and just kind of discussed normal routine things. We meet with him every month. And then we also got back to work on our, not Gerald and I, but myself and others, Juvenile Justice Partnership Committee met this last week. We started, it's a group that has met over the last 11 years, working on juvenile detention alternatives. It's just a policy group. We hadn't met for a while because of the pandemic and some other issues the year before that. So we are back on track. Judge Hoffman and myself are the co-chairs of that committee. I'd say we had nearly 20 people at that meeting, from nonprofits to county staff. And just getting back into digging into the data and a new direction, not new direction, but continued direction on what we need to work on.
Commissioner Benega?
Commissioner Heiburger's already talked about JDC, so I won't repeat that. I also attended a metro management meeting, which lasted quite a while. It was in-depth conversation about budget and personnel growth and those kinds of things. And the joint commission agreement and the council, city council, will be addressed in the near future.
And I was supposed to be at that meeting, too.
Yes, you were.
I missed, picked a week, one heck of a week to be gone, so.
I think of good timing.
Commissioner Barth, anything?
Nothing.
Okay.
I'm skipping all my meetings, just like you.
Yeah, yes. All right. New business.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bog, how are you?
Good. Eric Bog, Deputy State's Attorney. Just wanted to give you a brief update on a more formal level. The South Dakota Municipal League, the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, and the Assurance Alliance all collectively worked together to try and draft some model ordinance to allow those collective entities, municipal municipalities and the counties, to address the upcoming issues that will be presented with IM26, which is the medical marijuana issues. So those model ordinances came from those entities. As a brief update, and somewhat as a corrective measure, there was some stories that circulated this weekend that seemed to imply that those issues were driven or drafted locally by the state's attorney's office, city attorney's office. That's not the case. That's not where those came from. Our office is in a little bit of a pickle in the sense that we have ethical obligations not to advise as to issues because marijuana is still illegal on a federal level, even though the state has now adopted at least a partial medical allowance for that. So IM26 does contain provision that after July 1st would give some relief to that ethical consideration. But between now and then, there may be limits on what we're allowed to advise all of you to do or not to do. But just wanted to let you know that that has been received from those entities. And you individually may have already received that as well. If you have not, we can certainly present that to you. But I would advise you to start thinking about that process, what the county wants to do, or what that you don't want to do. To the extent we can, we'll certainly provide answers. Mr. Heiburger, the state's attorney is here as well to provide any answers that you would like from the head of the office. And I'm certainly standby for further questions as well. But there's no action item today. It just lets you know that we've received that and would ask you to start thinking about it.
So if we have questions, you can't answer them?
There are certain generic-level questions we certainly can't answer, but specifics may be difficult for us, yes.
Okay, okay. Comments? Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I guess my feeling is that the state should have come forward with a plan for this, instead of asking those of us in local government to come up with a plan at the grassroots, so to speak.
I don't think there'd be an argument from anybody here.
You know, why don't we adopt what Minnesota has? What, you know, Rock County, what's their, their plan?
All righty. Any other new business? Old business? All right. Do we have exec session? No exec session. Hey, we get to, no recess, we get to adjourn. But just to note that we, most of us have been here for four hours because we did have a meeting earlier this morning. So we had about a 10-minute break in the last three hours and 45 minutes. So thank everybody for their time and commitment, and look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.